All right, good evening, everyone, if you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone, welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board meeting for January 21st, 2020, full board here, and we are meeting tonight at the Rutland Town School in Mike Rowe's health education room because after this, we have our pre-town meeting, presentation of the budgets to the town's residents, so I promise our next meeting will be back in our cozy office and Town Hall's coming together, right, Bill? So, okay, minutes, first of all, the orders, does everyone see the orders? I understand two of the packets didn't make it. Sharon, did you get your packet?
I just barely got it.
John Paul, did you get a packet?
I ran mine off.
You ran yours off? Yeah. So, because of the holiday, we're short a couple packets. We do have a couple sets of minutes to approve.
Okay, so I would move we approve the minutes of the January 15th meeting, that was the very brief one, Josh, me, Sharon, Joe, all of us were here.
Motion by Mary, seconded by John, for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
And a motion would be in order to approve the minutes of January the 7th.
So moved.
Motion by Mary, seconded by John, for discussion, any corrections, deletions, or additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Joe. Questions from the floor, public comment, I know Andy McCain's here. Hey, come on up for a moment.
Yes.
Andy's here representing Fire District 5, the Victoria, the solid terrace neighborhood, correct?
Correct.
And Andy, what was your request for the board?
We'd like to use one of the rooms in the Town Hall, the third Monday of every month, with the exception in August, to a date to be determined in August, because we have to hold our annual meeting on that date, and it's not a Monday.
Okay. And the town does have a meeting room fee schedule, and it's $25 an hour, correct, Bill?
Yes.
How long your meeting's been running, about two hours, Andy?
No.
No?
Hopefully 20 minutes.
Okay, so as long as, I would think my fellow colleagues and I would agree that as long as your fire district is comfortable and prepared to pay the rental fee, that we'd be happy to offer that room, correct?
Yes. And what we would like to have is, you know, police officer there, at least for the next two months.
And Chief Dumas has been the one who's been attending, correct?
Right, so the fee might be higher for that, but we're, I spoke with the other two, the other two members of our board, and we're completely on board with that, with the fees.
And Chief Dumas did indicate to me that he was okay attending those meetings over the next couple months, so.
Yep.
Phil?
The policy is five hours an hour, it's a minimum of two hours. What's taken in the policy?
Okay, so it sounds like it'll be a $50, a $50 charge.
That's fine.
Okay, thanks.
Very good.
Not in Florida.
I will be shortly.
Thanks for coming.
I was on Sunday.
Well, welcome home and enjoy your winter, all right?
It's nice to be here.
Yes, good to see you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Take care.
Any for, any additional public comments, anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to speak? Okay. We're gonna go right to Bill Sweet, Town Minister of Assistant to the Select Board. Bill, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Let me tell ya, I was at Town Hall today, and this guy didn't stop, so he was down report and moving offices and everything else, so.
Hasn't stopped yet. Uh, okay. Can we get back into our original spot? Um, yes. Okay.
That was ever, that's pretty broad.
Ever, yes, I'm sure at some point you will be. So you have the latest scheduled committee items, which got much shorter over the last couple weeks with the committee meetings that have happened, so that's, that's good. Number two is the annual healthcare declaration form, that needs to be turned back in, every department, every employee's getting them, so just need to get that back into the office some point in the near future. Number three is from Byron for tractors. Number four is a request from our Solid Waste Alliance to use the meeting room, May 15th during the day, for, for two hours.
Is that a business day, May 15th?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That, so if we need a motion, so moved.
Motion by Mary is our second. Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, number five is an email from Bill Bauer. He is our current SWAC representative, so he's saying he would prefer to be the alternate. He was in my office this morning, and I've already spoken to Larry, and they've agreed that, if agree, if you guys agreeable, that Larry would be the primary, and Bill could be the, the alternate when those appointments come up.
I don't see any reason why not, right? Anyone?
Well, we'll have, no.
Yeah, we haven't gotten appointment letters yet, so.
We got time, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, number six is a letter from one of the scholarship recipients, following up with everybody.
Nice letter.
And number seven was asked to be in there, it's the excerpt from the employment policy on the town computer system.
Yeah, so we're gonna hold on to that for new business, so hold on to seven.
Yep.
Before we've handled, and then three will be during Byron's time.
Yep. On your desk, I have a couple things, the calls for service from Chief Dumas.
Love that.
And something that we just got in, project review sheet from the DEC, Mountain Traveler Retail Store is looking to be converted into, looks like a dental practice, so that's the one, I think right in front of, where, right next to Little Caesar's, that's, that's where that was, so they're looking for that, and just, they started their process and sent that to us, so that's for information for the moment.
Well, that'll be good.
Yep. Uh, the, so that's everything for the desk from me. Town report is about 98% laid out, I'm waiting for like one thing from one person, and then I can send it, so, and it's nobody here.
It's not me, is it?
Nobody here, nope, nobody here, so that's, that's it, everybody, everybody got in some, some over the weekends, and some, some today, but we got everything in. We have the warning for tonight that needs to be signed, so Josh, that's in your originals folder there, later on tonight, so I get the one from here, and from the school, then one more thing, and then it's ready to go, so that will be, I'm hoping to have it out to the printer Wednesday or Thursday, and then they'll, they'll keep moving on, so that's in, in good shape. Don't foresee any issues with it, so hopefully we're, we're doing well. Remodel is all set, we have four desks that are now orphaned from the project, so those are gonna go up online for, for anyone who would, would like one, we're gonna have a short, kind of a short window to pick them up, because with the meeting coming up in two weeks, I wanna have them gone by, by then, so if they're not gone, then they'll leave one way or another at this point.
Do any of our department heads need them?
Uh, Larry's taking one of the smaller ones, so, yeah, there are some that are being, being around, we're gonna see what we can do, and, and see what we can do to get, get them a good home. But yeah, so that's almost the last of it, we're really, really close, so it's, it's good. We did get the final invoice from Kyle, he had made an error in what he charged us, so he had to get me a corrected one, which we couldn't get in time to get in the orders, so I guess we'll have to do that for next time, so.
Oh, we might, we might have to just have a quick board meeting before our next one, just to sign, have three of us sign that for the contractor, so.
Okay, so that's, that will wrap that up.
Billy, is the window still there that we have?
It is.
So, we should advertise that, or do something with that one.
It's on the Facebook page.
On the Facebook page, with the dimensions.
Yep. Yep, I put a picture of the labels of every, each part of the window, and everything, so, yep, that'd be great to get, move it out.
You may not get what we paid, what he paid for it, so.
That'd be nice, but yeah, probably not.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, if somebody wants to make an offer on it, then we'll, I'll pass it along and see what we can do with it, but I'd, I'd love to have it not be there, so, that's, that's all I have.
Any questions for Bill? Good? Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara's not here. This Regional Planning Commission Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement, was this, this was for Byron, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
(inaudible).
Mike Rowe, Rec Director.
I don't have much, everything is in winter mode, we're starting to do our spring meetings with our Rec Directors coming up in the first part of March. Other than that, I'll pose, we had our committee meeting, and we talked about the outdoor, is that appropriate to bring that up at this point, as far as, or do you want somebody else to bring that up?
Well, it was under highway, so if Byron comes up, if you could join him and...
Then we'll leave it at that, that's right.
Byron, you can make your way up now.
Might as well.
Might as well, doesn't sound like Mike had much more to...
I don't have much more, I really don't.
Thank you for the popcorn.
Under New Business Board to Discuss Cold Storage Facility at Northwood Park, we learned more about this last week at our joint committee meeting at Town Hall, sound like from the committee discussions, we were pretty much all in favor of supporting the project. Did the board have any questions for Byron or Mike additionally? Byron, did we, did we ask you to find out any, any more research on that, or?
No.
Okay. So at this time, there'd be a motion in order if we're going to support this?
So moved.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Mary, to approve the construction of a cold storage facility at Northwood Park, which is...
Yep.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, there's, the minutes kind of summarize what the proposal is, and Byron's got some sketches, so if anyone's interested, the minutes will be posted online.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bye.
Do you want me to take the lead on filling out the 250 permit?
Please.
A little input from Mary.
Did you wanna do it, or Byron?
Sure, well Byron did it last time, and I looked it over, and it was approved, so what the heck.
Sounds good.
All have.
All right, Michael, thank you. Byron, what do you got?
Uh, most, everything I have, I think is gonna be covered by the committee meeting. The only thing I will mention is the Transportation Action Council will be starting up its meetings again here in another week or so, and will be discussing prioritization of highway and bridge projects over the next couple meetings.
Okay.
The other thing I had to bring up that wasn't brought up at the meeting, there is a grant opportunity, right now, it's a block grant through DEC, it's being administered by the Southern Windsor Regional Planning Commission, I believe, but anyways, because it would apply to the Windmere retrofit project being in the MS4, it would be a 50-50 grant and not a complete block grant. I guess we're fortunate in that with an MS4, you get penalized at 50% on your grants instead of just getting the whole thing, but, I was wondering if the board was interested in entertaining that, I got some information from Andres today in regards to costs, he was looking at about, this would be for 30% engineering and whatnot for that project, which would be about $30,000. That would be 15 to us, and 15 through the block grant if approved, and if the block grant wasn't approved, then we could just pull the plug on the project till the next grant round of ERP or something else.
Thoughts from the board?
Stormwater are proposed.
The actual grant application is submitted by the RPC.
Okay.
I would probably be involved with filling that out, and then working with them, but they would be submitting the, the actual application.
This was one of the items on our list of things that will give us credit toward our stormwater.
Yes, as well as the, because this spring, I think by July, I think Bill knows that, isn't it by July, we have to have our phosphorus control plan?
Yes.
Under motion, and that's there, again, that's all part of our MS4, and this would give us, by retrofitting that as a gravel wetland, that would give us a lot of credits toward our phosphorus control.
Okay, so we had budgeted in this fiscal year $15,000 for stormwater.
Yes.
How, I don't have the other, do you know how much of that we've used, with the Andres work?
Do you have a year-to-date budget?
In the current budget?
Yeah, in current year's budget, yeah.
Oh, I don't have my sheet with me on the current budget.
Would we know if it's this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
We will know sometime soon after the grant application, so we would know sometime in February, the grants are good until 2021, I believe.
Okay.
So the actual project could take place within another fiscal year, if so desired.
Okay, could we split it over two fiscal years?
That I did find out, so it could be split between two fiscal years.
Okay. Now, I think we could make it fit, then.
But we also had, if I recall, we also had given Andres permission to...
Spend up to...
Spend some other money on it, right?
The balance, yeah. Yeah.
The other project you mentioned was the Nancy Lane project, but that was another $30,000 in additional engineering and whatnot, and I'm not familiar enough with that, and I indicated that to him today, so I thought it would be better if we just went with the one project, a little smaller, till I had a little better feeling, a little better understanding of what he wants to do up there in Nancy Lane, 'cause that takes, in that, Mr. Bernrider's on Columbus, corner of Columbus, it takes in that whole area, so I don't know if there's something that we can do with that to help out Mr. Bernrider or not, but anyways, that's, that's a discussion I need to have next time Andres is down this way and involved with that project. And there's also an easement that needs to be obtained from Velco, and that might take a little longer time.
Yep.
So I thought it better to split the two projects between two, two years.
Board's pleasure.
I move we authorize Byron to go after the grant, 50-50 match for...
This would be for the engineering, Byron, to start with, yeah.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joe, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. What else you have for us, bye?
I did submit in your packets a breakdown of a couple of different tractors that we have been looking at, Board of Selectmen and Mendon have authorized Bill to go ahead and spend what he feels is, is a good deal. I submitted two tractors to you, one is locally through a local dealer, HB Fairfield, the other is a tractor off the internet, we, most of the board members here looked at it at the committee level meeting, it's down in Georgia, I would have to work out a little bit of the finance somehow on that, because I'm not, I haven't talked to Mr. Rowden, but I'm certainly not gonna send a $50,000 check to Georgia in the hope a tractor shows up at our doorstep.
Mm-hmm.
So there's either, if he would ship the tractor, and then when we receive it and send him a check, that would work, or we would have to find some type of third-party, disinterested third-party, like a bank or something that would hold a check in escrow until the tractor was delivered, and then at that point, Mr. Rowden would get a check.
Which one do you prefer?
I prefer the one, it's a little more money, but I prefer the one out of Fairfield and, and Morrisville.
And is Mendon okay with that one?
Yeah.
I would, I would make that, we purchased the one from Fairfield's.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Mary.
Did talk about that some at the Highway Committee meeting.
The one in Fairfield, we can go pick up, the one in Georgia, I mean, how many thousands of dollars are we gonna be in shipping costs?
I figure somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000.
That's not included in the price.
Uh, I think I included $2,500 in the estimate.
Oh, you did, yeah.
I, I think we're better off if one of you guys, you and Bill can go look at, run, be happy with, and not have to travel to Georgia to get.
Right.
Personally, I would go to Georgia if I was buying a farm tractor, but that's a lot different when you're doing your own business, for the town, I think that's a better deal.
That's what I did, I mean, when I...
And this money would come out of our equipment depreciation fund?
Depreciation fund, yes.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yep.
You have to have that here for us to sign.
It's, it's there for you to sign, it's an agreement that was vetted by the, by a legal firm in Burlington, that was hired by the local planning commission, we're hoping to get as many towns onto it as possible, so that if it's ever used, just because we have it, just because we've signed onto it, doesn't mean that we have to use it, but should we use it, it sets up all the protocols for reimbursement and that sort of thing, and should it be done as a result of a FEMA declaration, for instance, then we have the necessary paperwork to, to back up the costs and that sort of thing, so that reimbursement can be, can be received by a town that is, that is giving aid. That happened back in 2011 during Irene, there were several Addison County towns that didn't have much of anything for damage, and they went over the mountain to the town of Rochester, and were not allowed reimbursement through FEMA for a lot of their, a lot of the work that they did to help out the towns over there. So it's there.
The Highway Committee considered this, listened to your arguments, and recommended to the full board that it be signed, is there one signature or five signature places?
They'd have to make a motion to authorize me to sign on behalf.
Okay, so I move we approve the mutual aid agreement and authorize our chair to sign on the board's behalf.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Sharon, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I believe that's all I had, unless there's something else at the committee level that I haven't remembered.
The request from Homeowners Association at Windmere to have the town install a streetlight, your Highway Committee took a look at that and decided to recommend to the full board that we not install a streetlight.
There currently is a streetlight a couple hundred feet down the road from that intersection.
Okay.
Okay.
So I don't think we need a motion on that.
Nope.
Byron's working on the five-year highway plan, and that will, eventually it will come in and we'll show it to you, but it probably will also include a new salt shed building, that would be hopefully funded by grants. And there's no further movement from the Homeowners Association at Windmere to have the town take over maintenance of Carmel Place, and we had outlined for them what needed We talked about the culvert pipe that runs under Route 7 from Seward Road to the retention pond, and there's no action at this time on that.
Who owns it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we, we don't really want to own it. And I think the only other thing was the Regasta property, and we hired Bronson Spencer to do the engineering, but the rest of the work was to be done by the homeowners, so I think we're gonna invite Bronson to come in.
Next meeting, hash some of that out.
Yep. Okay, that's all we had for them.
Anything for Byron?
Thank you, sir. Chris Clark, Fire Chief, as Chris makes his way up here, I have three liquor licenses here for us to sign. The first is for Jolly Associates, the Sidco located at 351 US Route 4 East, just above the Chinese Restaurant. Then there are two liquor licenses renewals for East Restaurant LLC, I was trying to figure out what the difference between the two, okay, one's a first-class restaurant bar license to sell malt beverages, and the other's a third-class restaurant to sell spiritus liquids, so, how would the board like to handle this approval at once, or do individual motions?
Did the Chief of Police okay this? We usually...
The Chief just walked in.
I haven't seen him.
Okay.
Washington is not, I know, we haven't any problems, but I've heard of the...
What's, what's the duty?
I don't know if there's...
Can we hold for a couple of weeks and give you a chance to double-check? I don't think there's any...
That's what I would do.
Yeah.
Well, Bill, put these on the next agenda, if you would, please, and I'll leave this for the, the chief to... Bet those, please. Chief Clark, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Thank you, nice to see you.
What do you got tonight for us?
Uh, not a lot, first thing, I'd like to thank you, Five, for the flowers you sent for my father's funeral, I appreciated that, so did my mother.
We got a nice card here from Mrs. Egan to the board, says, Dear Rutland Town Select Board, thank you so much for the beautiful floral arrangement for Bruce's services, it was so very thoughtful of you, and my family appreciates it so much, sincerely, Debbie Egan. So, thank your mom for that. It was the least that we could do, sending some flowers for your family, Chris, so...
We appreciate it, so thank you very much. I do have another application for JP to do a background check, so I'll give that to him. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I don't know if Mike talked about it, but the mall is completely closed, fire alarm's gone, sprinkler's gone, we can still hook to it, but there's, they shut the water off, the city shut the water off, they had to dig up two spots in the parking lot to add valves to keep the Spartan Arena going, so that killed all the fire hydrants except for two, one's out by the front of Kmart, and the other one's out back of Kmart by the hockey rink, so if something's going on, we either have to lay some hose or call some tankers, but, and then I've been talking with the guy that works for Zomias down there, 'cause I, I would like that propane tank gone, so he, I talked to him yesterday, and Suburban said they didn't wanna touch it, they just wanna leave it, and I told him that's not okay, needs to be gone, so Suburban emailed me yes today, and said they're gonna start dismantling it.
Good.
So that'll be gone.
That's a 30, isn't it, 30,000?
It's 30 or 50.
I think it's a 30,000 gallon tank, that's a...
That's out back of Sears.
Yeah.
That, that's a good thing to be somewhere else.
So, the sprinkler and the whole building, it's still all put together so we can hook a truck to it, except for in the garage at Sears where they did the tires, 'cause that broke, frozen broke a couple years ago, and they never fixed it.
They would obviously have drained the water out of those sprinklers?
They did, every, the whole building's drained, so.
Don't...
I told them we're not putting anybody in there, it's a vacant building, so.
And I can guarantee that there's probably broken pipes in there.
Oh, yeah.
You'll be pumping waters to nowhere.
Oh, yeah.
But this is deja vu for anybody that was here when the other mall went, so, it's almost identical.
So they did say we could do a training, so I'm trying to get the whole county involved, like we did at the old mall.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they're, they're working with us, and so, they're being, you know, it's going good.
Yeah, good.
I wanted to thank the Fire Department, over the last two weeks, I've called four times and requested some water to the ice skating rink here at the school, with the fluctuating temperatures, it's been really hit or miss as to getting this field flooded and ice down, and so the department's been phenomenal in helping, every time I call, within 60 minutes, there's a fire truck here pumping water for the ice skating rink, so thank you to all of your men and women who have helped with that.
I will tell them.
Anything else, Chief?
That's all I got.
Anything for the Fire Chief?
No?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief. Larry, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chief, what do you have for us?
Not too much, calls of service, we got 33, wrote in what BSP did to, 21. Other than that, really, nothing on my personnel matter that might be handled later on this week, I guess.
Okay. Any questions for the Chief? Any questions for the second constable? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Nope.
Any questions for the Second Constable? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
How about, any questions for the Town Health Officer? Nothing, huh? Committee meeting updates. We talked about the Highway Committee meeting. We also had a Building Committee meeting where we talked. We have, I don't have it with me, do you have a copy of that proposal from Kyle on the hallway? So let's go to...
It was 2,750.
It was 2,750.
Fifty to redo the paint and...
Was it in the minutes?
It may have been.
Last week, oh.
So if you've noticed, the hallway at Town Hall, unfortunately, we had that painted a few years back and, you know, the job wasn't up to our standards. We need to redo it. Kyle, through his painter, has given us a proposal for 2,750 to fix paint and so on. And so the committee felt, if I'm correct, the committee felt like that was the right thing to do in this fiscal year. We have the money.
That, in conjunction with that, is the replacement of the water cooler, because that has to come off the wall and that's, get rid of, you know, make it look nice. So that was another, I think it's about...
That's 2,200. It was in the Building Committee minutes.
Yeah, yeah. It was 2,200 to do one and about 27 to do the other.
2,750 for the repaint.
I think it was our recommendation that we do that.
So the, is that a motion, Joe?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, per the committee's input, that we would approve Kyle's money to do the repaint that and refix it and then to updo the, upgrade the water cooler. Is he going to be involved with all of that or we got to get somebody else who does the water cooler, but?
Well, the water cooler, he gave a proposal for, to get that done, so that came through him, so we...
Go through Kyle, okay.
So the last invoice we got from him, there were some extra expenses that came out of the remodel. So once we pay that, it's going to be more than we anticipated, so we're going to have less left over than we thought we were going to. So we've got to now see what that's going to actually fall out as, so we may not be able to do both of these before July. So the extras are, basically ate up the budget for these projects, so we'll have to see what's left before we totally move forward and...
Well, we still have, we have enough money to do the painting if we have to hold off for July 1st for the fountain.
No, you do the fountain first.
Yeah.
You wouldn't want to paint that and then take that stuff off the wall and then go back. So if you do the fountain first, then go back and finish the painting.
Well, we have to find some money somewhere to paint because we have, you can see bare sheet rock in many places in the hallway.
But you got to do them in the proper order. You know, it's kind of like paving the streets and then digging them up to fix the waterline under it.
Well, I know nothing about installing a water fountain, I'm not going to pretend I know, but why do you, you can't...
Why can't we do that rental thing with the water fountains?
Well, I'm just thinking...
Because that gets money. That's, you got perfectly good water. We just got an antique water fountain over there. It was like the antique bathroom fixtures when we did the remodel. We've done everything else, just move forward with something new in mind.
Then what, Joe, Joe, what if you table your motion for two weeks and let us settle out the bill with Kyle on this?
That's...
And then we'll see how much money we have for next meeting.
Because we could spread this over two budgets. We could do it in June.
Okay. All right, so you'll put that back, you'll put that under old business for two weeks? You're good with that?
I'm fine, yeah.
Good?
That's a new development.
All right.
Since the last meeting.
Letter C, Board to discuss Newtown Circle editor. So we've known for a while Carol is retiring after the 100th edition, which is this Town Meeting Day edition in February. And we were in search of a new editor or publisher of the Circle. There was a couple of us sitting around there at the meeting last week and the name of Janelle Fagin was mentioned. Janelle is John Paul's oldest daughter. She's a freelance reporter and has a tremendous experience with writing and editing and publishing and, you know, something to do with the Circle like this would be right up her alley. We had a conversation with Janelle and Janelle tentatively with this board's approval has accepted the offer.
Great.
Janelle wanted to be here tonight, but she's under the weather. I talked to her via email today, but we felt like we found our candidate. I've talked to Carol about it. Carol also talked to Janelle and she was very excited for Janelle's level of skill and, you know, ambition to take this on. I've also talked to Deborah Dolphy, the principal here, because the Circle is a partnership between this board and the school. Deb was thankful that we were able to locate somebody and I also told them that we were taking on the expense of the stipend for the next person and they were even more excited once they heard that the school didn't have to pay for it. So I think that we've done our due diligence. We've talked about it for months and I would ask my colleagues, someone to make a motion that Janelle Fagin would be the next publisher of the Circle.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Mary. For discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain.
One abstention. Motion passes four to zero with one abstention.
Good.
Okay. Carol also did say that she will help Janelle with one or two publications after Janelle takes over, so. Letter D, Board to discuss interim Town Clerk and Treasurer position. I spent last Thursday and Friday on behalf of this board doing a lot of phone calls and homework and trying to find someone to fill the role for the next six weeks until the election. We have Mary DeLean in place. Mary's a huge asset, but what we don't have is right now someone to officially oversee the elections. I've also, if you may have gotten in your mail today a notification for a BCA meeting, I asked Bill to send that out for next week because since the last BCA meeting, it was suggested that Susan would be overseeing the elections and that's not something that's going to happen, per Susan's request. So I've talked to every town from here to Middlebury and south of Manchester, trying to find a recently retired clerk who could come in and help us. I've had no help. We've had, I've had Mary Angulette in West Rowland help, I've had Lucretia in Killington try to help and we're getting nowhere. So we have Mary DeLean, she's willing to work 40 hours a week with Susan. The office is staffed and covered and we feel very confident that we're not going to skip a beat in Kirsten's departure, but the election is somewhat of a concern still that we'll discuss more with the BCA next week. The more I'm learning about it, there are certain things like, you know, we had to find out from Kirsten, for example, where we print the ballots and when they have to be done and timelines and things like that. So I have that information. I feel like we're, you know, have a good process now in place, but I have a few ideas as well for the BCA for next week to discuss election officials, but, so that's why I put that on the agenda, so you would know what I've worked on over the last few days on behalf of all of you to try to get this buttoned up. So I think we're 90% there. We just have this Town Meeting Day election, which also doubles as a presidential primary, which adds a level of maybe stress or whatever you want to call it. But what I've, I've talked to some retired clerks as well who have been out of service for five or six years and although that doesn't sound like a long time, they've all indicated to me that the election laws and processes and technology has changed so much in five or six years, it's not something that they would be much assistance facilitating our election. So that's the latest. Any feedback I'd love to hear or we can talk about it more at the BCA meeting next week. Board to discuss Campbell Road. This has been a topic of discussion for months and months now.
Years.
Years, yeah, thank you, years. I asked Bill to put it back on the agenda because I was encouraged to see that the city of Rutland is going to pull out a bond on Town Meeting Day in the city for $5 million, $4 million of which would go to reclaiming and paving the streets. And so I would like to see this board draft a letter to the city governance, you know, and thanking them for recognizing that their streets need some help, but more specifically that we would request that in that, if the bond passes, that in that $4 million that Campbell Road is a priority.
Did they get their water line stuff all done up there?
Yeah.
They buried that in the road, right?
Side.
I think it went down the edge.
Did they go down the edge? Because that, a year ago or a year and a half ago, they were going to put it in the road and do some different stuff, but...
On the outside edge.
Is the board in favor of me asking Bill to draft a letter on our behalf?
Sure.
Can't hurt.
Okay. Coffee quiet down there tonight, you all right?
It's the surroundings. He didn't like school.
Board to discuss the technology policy. So Bill, you'll draft a letter on behalf of the board for us to sign in two weeks? Okay, thank you. Our technology policy, we were reviewing at committee and there's areas of opportunity for us to strengthen our technology policy, things that are recommended by many in the industry that we don't have in our policy. For example, spelling out that we want to limit the scope of who has authority to work on a VPN or from offsite or from home, who has access to that type of ability. So Bill has printed off our current computer system policy and I would request that we send this to our Building and Technology Committee for us to sketch out some additional language for things like remote access and so on.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Seconded by Sharon.
Could we also check with our auditors and see whether there's anything that they would suggest for this?
Sure, yeah, we can do that as well.
They sometimes have ideas on that?
Yeah, maybe we could have Andrew even come to the meeting, Billy. When, it's Joe and I, right?
When you and I schedule.
Yeah. So maybe we'll look at next week.
One day.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So we'll send that to committee for next week. That handles all new business. Any other business to come before the board? Any old business to discuss?
Yes, sir.
Jim Schultz, our tax collector, come on up.
Thank you. How you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Last year, I had brought to the board, taking the properties at 65, 77, and 87, Business Route 4, up to tax sale. And due to some medical issues on my part and the lawyer I initially started this project with, I had to be restarted. And so I just want to confirm with the board that I will be taking the properties out for to tax sale and request that the board agree to be the first bidder at the minimum bid and as soon as another bid comes in, the town drops out. In that respect, if nobody bids on the property, the town would own it and the expenses that would, if not, then the expenses would wind up being on the town and the property would still be out there for tax sale issues.
How many, how many years, Jim, have they delinquent on their taxes?
2015, 16, and to today.
And they haven't, after all your attempts, they haven't shown any good faith in trying to pay it?
No, none whatsoever.
Okay.
And the town would bid it in for the amount of taxes owed?
Right, to cover the cost and taxes, cost of the tax sale and the, cover the taxes and all. And then at the end of the year, the taxes, if the original owner doesn't reclaim it, the town would be able to do what it wants to do with it, put it up for sale or do whatever.
What's the board's pleasure?
Normal practice.
Okay. You want to put that in a motion, John?
I do approve that going forward.
Okay. Motion to approve for Jim's outline, seconded by Joe, for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's not something we say. Maybe abstain?
Yeah.
So motion is approved by four to nothing with one abstention. Anything else, Jim?
Nope, that'll be it.
All right, sir. Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we covered all department heads in the room, correct? Any further business, Sharon?
Nope.
Joe? We're going to correct that.
Okay.
Mary?
No, thank you.
John Paul? What do we, I'd take general for tonight.
We don't go in town.
Well, Sharon, do you want to present recreation tonight?
Yeah, we'll run it, we run through it once.
Yep, we, looks like we'll have time.
Yeah, we'll have time.
Mary, Highway?
Sure.
Let's not leave us Fire. What do you get?
What? I'll do whatever you tell. Then we do what we do in Fire.
Oh, you want to do Fire?
Sure, I'll do Fire.
And you want to do Police?
No.
Okay.
I do the fucker.
Sharon, Mary, Joe, and JP.
Do we have copies of those?
Yes. Okay, motion to go into executive session for personnel matter would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Sharon, for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone.
Anybody staying with us?
No.
Okay, good evening. My name's Matt Geddy, I'm your new Town Moderator. In case if any of you didn't know me and checked the box anyway, I thank you for your blind faith. We customarily start the meeting with the pledge to the flag, so I invite all those who are inclined to rise and join me in that now.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so most of you probably aware that this is an informational meeting. We're going to hear from both the Select Board and the School Board coming up. Before we get into that, I do have a draft warning for the ballot items in front of me. So I will quickly go through those items. I'll skip over the budgetary items that we will hear about in a few minutes and I will list the other ballot items and we'll see if anyone is here to speak on those topics. So we have here an item for $500 towards supporting the work of Neighbor Works of Western Vermont, $535 towards supporting the work of the Vermont Center for Independent Living, $670 towards supporting the work of the Retired Senior Volunteer Service, or RSVP, $800 towards supporting the work of ARC, $975 for supporting the work of the Bennington Rowland Opportunity Council, or BROCK. Anyone hear from those organizations who wishes to speak? Seeing none, moving on. $1,500 towards supporting the work of the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging, $2,500 as our share toward Rutland Economic Development Corporation's budget to promote economic development in Rutland region and Rowland Town, $3,000 towards supporting the work of the Child First Advocacy Center, $3,500 for the support of the partial funding of Marble Valley Regional Transit Districts, or the bus, public transit service. Anyone from those organizations? Seeing none. $4,054 to the Regional Marketing Initiative, a collaboration of the Rutland Region Chamber of Commerce and the Rutland Economic Development Corporation, along with area businesses and municipalities for the ultimate goal of growing the economy in our region. $4,500 for the support of Wonderfeet Kids Museum, $4,502 towards supporting the work of Rutland Mental Health, $500 for the Rutland Area Hospice and $6,000, excuse me, $6,500, total $500 for Rutland Area Hospice and $6,000 for Rabna Home and Community Health Services. Fifteen, actually I'll stop there. Anyone from those organizations? Okay. $15,000 for scholarships to be awarded to worthy 2020 high school graduates from Rowland Town who have resided in the town at least two years. $16,216 toward the Rutland Regional Ambulance Service, $95,965.95 for our contribution to the Rutland Free Library Association. to the Rutland Free Library Association. And those are all the ballot items. Any comments on those?
Is that scholarship in Rutland Town, is that an increase? Because I thought it used to be $10,000?
There was $10,000 and we did, the select board agreed to up it to $15,000. I'm sure you know the cost of college has gone up greatly, so this gives our local students a slight edge.
Were you gonna increase the scholarship amounts then, Mary? Or like the same number of students, so if it's 10 students, they would all get, you know, or is...
What we try and do, Sharon and I have been on the scholarship committee for the past couple of years and we look at the need, we look at the achievements and the accomplishments, and then we have like two or three tiers and we give some who are more needy, more money, and others who are fairly okay off, somewhat less. Yep.
Thank you, Mary. Yes.
Is this a time to comment on any of those items to ask the board?
With regard to those items, yes.
Input now or later?
Let's do it now before they get into their own budgets.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Is this a time now to comment on and ask questions about the...
Appropriations?
The library?
Sure, certainly.
The library?
Yes.
It's getting up there, it's getting closer. It did increase from last year as I see in the 2018 book, so we're up to $95,000 is what our share is. And I'm not saying that I don't support them, I'm just saying, has the board thought about possibly halving the amount that, and I was going to bring it with me tonight and I forgot, Mendon a year or so ago passed out a questionnaire to their constituents and asked, do they support, do they not support, and would you, you know, that type of thing for a feeler type thing? Is that something this board has considered?
Well, I'll start and then I'd ask for any input from my colleagues, but so, the one thing I want to make clear, and I'm sure everyone realizes this, but just because that appropriation is on the ballot for March doesn't necessarily mean that it was endorsed by this current board. They have the right, just like all these other nonprofits, to get on the ballot for an up-down vote based off of how you as the voters decide you want to support or not. That being said, we haven't had any internal discussions as to a cap for the library. They've been pretty consistent. There was a couple of years where they level funded from the previous year and now this seems like it's a small increase. Normally, the representatives from the library come and give us a small presentation at the board level. They did not this year, for one reason or another, I'm unaware of why, but, and normally they have some type of a representative at this meeting, which I don't know if there is or not, but I hope I answered your question, but it's not, you know, it's not something that we've discussed and it's something that we could certainly in the future.
Is it something that you would discuss?
I think we're open to any discussion. Yeah, I don't, you know, this board is very open-minded to discussing anything regardless of how we might personally feel about a subject or not. So you could find, you could certainly find it on our agenda in the future if we felt strongly enough to discuss it.
So after you have an internal discussion and you deem it worthy of a look-see, then it will be discussed?
Well, it wouldn't be an internal, I wouldn't say an internal discussion, it would be a public discussion. So it would be something that we would put on the agenda to discuss and warn, like we do all meetings, for everyone and anyone in town or elsewhere to come and discuss with us. But, you know, it might be something for us to take a peek at, to see what, you know, they normally come with statistics like how many town residents are, have library cards and what type of, you know, computer usage that we see from town residents, things like that. I just, we didn't see for some reason, Bill, we should take the note to invite him to come in because normally we see Randall Smathers come in and talk to us. Mary, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I do. I am in the library every Saturday with my daughter checking out books. I do know, and this looks like a very modest increase, I spoke briefly with Randall about what the budget was looking like. Remembering a couple of things, one, they do receive grants, and the second thing is they do get appropriations from other participating towns. One year, we did not, and this was, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, we didn't, we pulled out our participation and it was a very, very difficult year and, for the library, and it just created some rather bad feelings. I do know that if we attempted to run anywhere near a library service as part of our town budget, it would, we just could not afford it. So this is a very, I think, a very wise use of money to chip in and support a regional asset.
I'm not saying...
I don't support it.
I just think, I see it every year.
Yes.
It's getting closer and closer to that $100,000 mark, so this is, I think this is the question I ask every free town meeting, is there gonna come a point when, you know, we're gonna say, oh, you know, we just can't contribute, you know, as much, you know, maybe like, you know, entertaining like 80, 85,000 or something like that, which is a good chunk of money, you know, but I'm not saying I don't support it, I'm just concerned about, and yes, it is a modest chunk, but it will eventually get there.
Another comment, yes?
Just one thing about the budget, though, is that I believe that's a per capita figure, so each town pays on the amount of usage or the amount of citizens per town, that's how the library figures that amount. And as far as that amount, that's what March is about. If you support it, you vote for it, and if you don't, you vote against it. And I think when that amount gets to a point where the town residents think it's too much, it'll go down to defeat and then negotiation starts. I don't think the negotiations will start beforehand. You know, we understand that they need certain amount of money to run and they try to keep it as minimal as they can, but it's based on the usage and the per capita basis per each individual town. So the voters ultimately have the say whether that appropriation is approved or not. It's not up to the board to put in an amount or probably even to negotiate that amount unless we're approached by the taxpayers that say, this is getting too much, we need to do something. But I think the final say comes down to you folks when you sit down there and march and vote, and if you're unhappy, you'll vote against it. And when it gets to the point where it becomes unaffordable, it'll go down to defeat. Thanks. Thank you.
Yes, Ron.
Yeah, regarding the library and all those items that we vote on every year, I know the library is probably one of the most higher ones. I do use the library in my life quite a bit. What I'm wondering is, could these items be tweaked slightly just to add a little thing that says, this amount comes out to X number of dollars per resident or taxpaying unit? Because I think that would put it in more perspective, like, it sounds like a big number, 100,000 or 95,000, but then, okay, how many citizens do we have and what is that? And then you can take it from there annually and divide it by 12, okay, you know, how many residents do we have?
Forty, 4,100, so.
Okay.
But, Ron, I think it's, I think it's, that's the responsibility, in my opinion, of the nonprofit requesting the money. So if they were smart, I'm not saying the library's not smart, but I'm saying if you were looking for money and you wanted to sell it to a bunch of voters, you would want to know down to the dollar, what is this gonna do to my tax bill?
I've lived here this many, this many years, 25 years, I don't know how many residents we have, it goes up or down or whatever. I think that would be helpful, I mean, we want new people to move in, right? Somebody moving in here is not gonna know how many residents here and what that breaks down to. If we can fit like, you know, $10 or 50 cents per resident, or 50 cents per, I think it would help put it in perspective.
So noted.
Okay.
I still think it's, the owner should be put on the nonprofit versus this board to go out and sell everybody's appropriation.
No, I'm not saying you're selling it, you're giving it.
Well, you are, when you break it down to the minute amount, it looks a little different than 100,000 and it's not on us.
It's on the nonprofit.
I hear what you're saying, but it's also, like I said, I don't, like I live here, but I work elsewhere, you know, I'm not in the town all the time. And there's a lot of people are in the same boat, we live here, it's a bedroom community, we don't know what it really, I mean, I tend to support these things, but I really don't know what it comes down to, it'd be helpful to know.
The statistics are on the, are the burden of the nonprofit asking for the money. If they want to give that, it's not, we allow them to put it on the ballot because they meet all the criteria and jump through the hoops that the town has set up, so they put them on the ballot. If they want to come in here and answer your, they should be somebody here from every one of these nonprofits to answer any questions because we can't answer those. All we do is give them the right to put it on the ballot. So it would be taking time from somebody's day, Billy's day, or somebody's here to put these statistics, that's not our job. We're not selling any of these. We're just giving you the information, they're out there, vote for the ones you want to vote for, don't vote for them, whatever, it's not on us.
How many have you just read?
Fifteen or 20 at least.
So you could do a little one page.
But it's not, it's, but it's not on us, sir. It's not on us. It's on the nonprofits. If they want to sell their...
Folks, we need to, I think we need to move on. I don't believe there are any folks here from these nonprofits. I think if anyone has a comment or suggestion, they'd like to quickly register for the record for them if they want to watch it on PEG TV later, now would be the time to do that, but suddenly, I understand.
If you want to provide useful information, especially to residents that are here.
Right. Your comment's been noted by the board and otherwise, I don't think the board can really answer questions regarding these, so if there are any comments regarding these items, yes, Mary?
If you look at the back of the town report, we do publish, each nonprofit sends in a report to summarize their year and the Rutland Free Library is on page 110 of last year's report and you'll see reports in the town report when we publish it. So, you know, that's their opportunity to say what they did for.
Okay. All right, I think we'll move on at this point then to the select board's presentation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. I think you did a fine job moderating this meeting so far. So, good evening, everyone, I'm Josh Taranzini, chairman of the select board. To my right is select board member Joe DiNardo, to my left, Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, and then John Paul Fagnan towards the end. I wanted to thank several department heads and town employees for being here. We have in the front, Bill Sweet, the town administration assistant to the board. We have Larry Delvanieri, he's our assistant fire chief and transfer station superintendent. We have Chief Chris Clark of our fire department, and then Chief Ed Dumas of the PD. We have Byron Hathaway, road commissioner. We have Mike Rowe, our recreation director, and then we have, I wanted to recognize Carol Bam, of course, the editor and publisher of The Circle, and Teresa Koolig right next to her, her right-hand assistant, is that right? All right. And then we have 1, 2, 3, 4, it looks like all of the school board are here and they're gonna come up shortly after we're done, so, and did I miss anybody? All right, good. Thanks for being here, we appreciate it. I'm gonna cover on page 1 through page 4 the general budget and I'm gonna highlight some of the major changes, whether it was an increase or decrease, and then my colleagues will also review the other respected budgets. So if you, first of all, we as a board decided in the fall, as we looked towards the budgets, that we were going to give a 3%, once again, a 3% pay increase for town employees, so that is adjusted accordingly in the top section of page 1. If you move down to Board of Civil Authority on page 1, you'll notice that we've increased that by $2,000 to $5,000. That's largely due to the number of elections in this coming year. We have three elections this year, a primary, and then you have your August primary, I'm sorry, your town meeting day, then your primaries in August, and then your presidential elections in November. That's why ballot clerks are up as well to 4,000. Supplemental office help, that's up by $2,000. This is a person that we could use in town hall, sort of like a utility player, I call it, someone who could work, some in the clerk's office and then if was needed, could work in Bill's office, could assist the select board or the listers, for example. So we're finding more special projects and more need for a little more assistance in town hall, so that's why we have 4,000 there. A large increase, as you'll notice, is under there, health officer, that's gone from $7,500 to $15,000. That's largely due to some state regulations and mandates that are coming down that would require our town health officer to do individual apartment inspections going forward. So we have somewhere around 200 apartments in the town of Rutland and these will need to be inspected for health codes and smoke detectors and other things that are required by Vermont law. We haven't had to do this in the past and so this is more of a mandate coming down from Montpelier for our health officer. Along with that, you'll notice a couple new categories for supplies and health officer consultants. There are some areas of expertise that we might need to hire someone, whether an electrician or plumber or whatever, to come in and assist the health officer. If you go down to second constable or fire, second constable and fire police, you'll notice there's an increase as well to $15,000. We appreciate wholeheartedly, and I know the police department does, the support last year of adding one additional police officer to our budget. We're still finding with the call volume and the less amount of calls that the state police are responding to, that we aren't able to cover in many cases the, run the radar that we'd like to as a town in terms of speed enforcement, traffic enforcement. So we let history be a good teacher for us and we know that this town had the best speed enforcement that we ever had when John Paul Fagnan was working for the PD. And John is willing and able to increase his coverage in the next fiscal year to 200, and he's committed to 250 road hours for us to run radar. And we've heard loud and clear, like I said, from the residents that they are looking for more speed enforcement. You may have noticed in your neighborhood over the last several months, you may have had our new radar cart, the speed cart that's sitting out front of the school. We're doing what we feel we can in a fiscally responsible manner to help lower speeds in Rutland Town. Increasing the constable line by $7,500 will certainly help keep speeds down in your neighborhood. And since this doesn't go into effect till July, you've had fair warning that you better watch your speeds in the neighborhood or John's gonna come find you, so, right, John? Going to page 2, you look at the second one down, election supplies, it's up from 3,000 to 7,000, once again, due to the increase in the number of elections that we're going to see in 2020. Things like utilities down slightly, lights and signals, Greenmount Power, we like to see that savings. A large decrease, the largest decrease that you'll see in the general budget this year is towards the bottom, maintenance, number 035205. Last year, we budgeted $65,000 for town hall maintenance. This year, we have decreased that to $28,000. That's due to the, largely due because we've completed now all of the upstairs renovations that we plan on completing. Over the last five years, we've renovated most everything upstairs at town hall. This $65,000 funded the renovations of the town clerk and treasurer's office, which was just completed this week. If you haven't seen it yet, stop by and take a look, it really came out very nice. And so we don't have any plans for any grand renovations this year at town hall, so we were able to save a significant amount there. Two down from it, attorney's fees, $35,000 down to $30,000. Thankfully, we haven't had a lot of need to use our town attorney and we felt like $30,000 was more responsible going into the next fiscal budget. If you look at a few down from there, stormwater, we had budgeted $15,000, we're up to $30,000 unfortunately. These are once again some state mandated projects that we are going to complete to be in compliance. We work with a consulting firm out of Chittingen County to help with these under the leadership of Byron. And if anyone had any further questions on what in this next fiscal year we're planning on doing, I'd turn your attention to Byron because he could certainly answer those better than I. These are a lot of real intricate, detailed projects that take a lot of engineering and studying and design before they can even break ground, so it has a lot to do with stormwater runoff and things like that. Any questions around that? Yes?
We're waiting to ask my questions at the end because there's two questions I had for...
All right, just hold them, hold them, I'll get through this and we'll get right back to them, okay? If you turn the page, you'll notice number 2, health insurance for our town employees has gone, we budgeted $88,000 last year. Unfortunately, with the skyrocketing price of health insurance, our best... Unfortunately, with the skyrocketing price of health insurance, our best projections from our insurance provider is to budget $110,000 from $88,000 year-over-year. So that's a $22,000 increase, certainly out of our control at this point. We do provide some incredible insurance for our employees who deserve it, and we didn't want to start to sacrifice the medical coverage that we provide there. Under that, there's a savings of $7,000 year-over-year from 14,000 to 7,000. That's new equipment. We have had a vigorous technology replacement and improvement plan for the last few years at town hall, thanks to the voters, and we don't project needing as much electronic equipment in the next fiscal year, which is a savings. Really, nothing more to talk about. VLCT, that's the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, their dues have gone from $7,000 to $9,000. So, once again, fixed costs that we had no control over. Now, if you turn to the next page, we have to, by law, for three years, we have to keep items that we're not budgeting for or not spending on any longer. We have to keep that on paper. So you'll see Cheney Hill, that a number of years ago now was turned back over to the school. So, the expense of the Cheney Hill building is paid out of your school budget versus the municipal budget. So that's why there's nothing in those boxes. And then you'll notice from 1920 to 2021, we went from $986 to $1,300,000. There's one error that Mary and I just caught on this page that we will certainly get corrected before these go to print or they're on the ballot. If you notice, anticipated 1 percent tax. We had $1 million on this page. If you turn to the last page in this packet, you'll notice a different figure, a figure we like a little better, actually. The correct number is $1,500,000. That's what we anticipate is 1 percent income, which is great. Our 1 percent income, this was, once again, calculated and projected, and we've looked at trends over the last several quarters as we've received the 1 percent sales tax from the state of Vermont. We feel very comfortable that it could be $1,500,000 or more by the projections, but we wanted to be conservative and not over-anticipate our income. The 1 percent sales tax is still very healthy in Rutland Town, even with the Diamond Run Mall closing, but retail is healthy in town. And we're excited to see that, once again, it maintains over $1 million in income because that's $1 million that we don't have to ask the fine taxpayers of Rutland Town to come up with. So, at this time, I would, I don't believe I missed anything, I would entertain any questions you may have about the general budget. Ms. Turner?
On page one, I just, the constable, I'm just curious to know why it's not in the police budget. I think I asked this, and I just don't want to, I'm trying to understand the difference, difference between a constable and then what's in the police, like the officers listed in the police department.
Sure. So, your constable position is an elected position, and for the most part, we try to keep elected positions in the general budget. It's not, although they have law enforcement capabilities, and I'd have John talk about it as well if he wanted, as he is the Second Constable. But it didn't make sense to put in your police budget because it is an elected office and is paid for separately from your police budget.
And you can do the same things as the police officers --
I would reference John for what, as constable, can you give a quick rundown of what you can and cannot do, maybe differences between the police department and as constable?
Sure. So, a police officer has statewide jurisdiction. A constable has jurisdiction only in the town. But as a police officer, you're not allowed to serve paperwork like a sheriff does. As a, as a constable, you can serve civil paperwork also. So, I think we can cover the whole gamut of what police do, including sheriffs.
Thank you.
Okay.
And one other question.
Mm-hmm.
I promise.
Ask as many as you want, this is what we're here for.
Don't say that, Josh. On page two, the recycling --
Yes.
-- under the transfer station, is it double the amount? I'm just curious by the increase.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I completely went over that. Recycling, it was a sharp increase in recycling due to the cost of the recyclables. Their value is very low, and we're not getting as much for them. And I would ask, and I'd ask Joe, as he's on the transfer station committee, or Larry, he's the manager of the transfer station, do you have anything to add?
Okay.
We'll have Larry stand up.
Larry Kane prepared.
For us, it's the newspapers, recyclables there. Back in September, I was paying $55 a ton to get rid of them. I just got a bill in December here, $113 a ton to get rid of them. So, that's where the money is. There's no money in recyclables. You pay to get rid of them.
Um, I have another question.
Please.
Update on the mall. You know, anything that's happening in that building was --
Yeah. Well, you know, we, I think this board did a phenomenal job of reaching out and trying to be good partners and stewards with the ownership of the mall. We spent a lot of 2019 trying to figure out a plan to help and, you know, be great ambassadors for that facility. Unfortunately, the mall is owned by a company who has been a little bit less than forthcoming with us about their plans. We did have several meetings with them via conference call or in person, but some of the plans that they told us about were sort of, in my opinion, and I'd reference any of my board members to chime in, but they have a lot of big visions, but a lot of talk and a lot less action, if you know that quote. Right now, the facility is completely shut down. The doors are boarded up with plywood. Water and utilities are shut off to the building. In fact, our police, or our fire chief updated us tonight on the facility. The mall is going to be gracious enough to allow, it sounds like, some fire department training in the facility. But we've heard, as, just like everyone else has, that the mall, part of it might be demolished, all of it's going to be demolished. There might be a hotel built, there might be a shopping center built, there could be, you know, so we're hopeful for the future, but we don't have a lot more information than what, you know, everyone here has seen on Facebook, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything from the board on that?
Good job.
Okay. Further questions on the general budget? Okay. I would turn your attention to the, what's next, fire? The fire budget, and we're going to have Selectman DiNardo present the fire budget. So, thank you.
We will do the fire budget here. This was put together by our fire committee and Chief Chris Clark. And as you go down through the pages, most of the numbers reflect what was actually spent by the department. So, some of the items are down, some are up. A little bit of an increase, or the major increase is into the salaries, and the thought process behind that is to a little better compensate our firemen for the time they put in and offset some of their expenses for their times. I know we are a volunteer department, but it's always nice to do a little something for our guys. So, that's about the biggest increase in the budget. All the other line items are pretty much right on par for what they were from last year or down a little, but that is the only major amount. A little bit up in the increase for the administrative salaries, and these are things that are beyond the fire department's control. There are new mandates for paperwork that everybody and their brother wants, and Chris and his crew were, the clerk there probably puts in, what's Mike, he's putting in 15, 20 hours a week, maybe 10 hours a week or more? There's just this phenomenal amount of stuff that everybody wants, and so they just try to stay on top of that, and we do our best to try to compensate them from their time away from their families and their contribution to the town. The budget is up slightly from last year, from 206921 to 217100 for a 4.92 percent increase, pretty modest for the service and the number of calls that they run. I believe last year was 219?
217.
217 last year, calls for service. So, that's a lot of time in, there are statistics, and they will be in your town report, the number of man-hours put in by the guys and the training hours, and it's, it's just, you know, we're getting a pretty good deal for our money here, so. Any questions? Go ahead.
The McKinley Avenue Station?
Yep.
I know we revamped the Center of Rutland once.
Yep.
Is there any talks about doing something that way?
Yep. There is a committee formed. There's been a couple of meetings held, and we're in the planning stages as to what we want to do there and how we're going to do it. The idea would be not to duplicate some of the facilities at the other station, but to maybe add some particular needs for the town in that building when we do it. So, we're right now in the planning stage. It's, I think it's in a five-year plan. We're hoping that within five years, we'll have a completed building there. That's kind of the guideline, but it will take a year or so to figure out what we want and then go from there. Yep. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. So I'd have Mary Ashcroft come up, and she will present the highway budget.
Good evening, and thanks for coming. One thing, Josh mentioned the 1 percent tax, and if you're curious as to the numbers, and we have been watching this very closely, it is in the town report on pages 43 and 44. So, and we go back, we've tracked several years of it. So, take a look at that, and that shows us, I mean, the trends have gone up and down in revenues from that particular source. So, I think our estimate is comfortable. Okay, fire budget, this is on, beginning on page five, there's two-page, I'm sorry, not fire budget, you want the highway budget. This is on page seven. Again, there's two pages on this. We are increasing the budget by just under 5 percent. So let me go through some of the things. Probably the biggest increase is the 3 percent for our hourly employees, and we also bumped up our sal, our sal read employee Byron, we gave him a pay increase because he is taking on more responsibilities, both with the water and sewer projects that we're undertaking. And you heard a little bit more about stormwater from Josh in addition to the highway work that he is doing. So, the labor you see under winter maintenance, that's bumped up. The general maintenance labor midway down, that's bumped up by 3 percent, and then the increase. Also on the first page, this is page seven, a slight increase in the number of, or the amount for supplies because, as you saw, we did expend $12,000 last year, and so we needed to anticipate a little more spending in that category. The part that everyone asks about, re-treatment, everybody asks about this, right? These are paving our roads. We have level funded the paving at $300,000. We are going, planning on working with the school to pave the parking lot here, the rest of it. However, we're not going to pave Campbell Road. We are in discussions with the city, and we were delighted to hear that the city is going out for a bond issue and hope for $5 million. Hopefully, that will pass, and that will enable the city to pave Campbell Road. We're down slightly on equipment rentals. That's usually looking ahead to projects and trying to anticipate what contractors will charge. Page eight, the next page, there is a decrease on the second line, our one-ton truck. The lease runs out this coming fiscal year, so we'll see a bit of a savings there. Down a little further, there's a seven-yard truck, $2,000 less budgeted. We bought the tires for it this fiscal year, and so we don't have to buy tires, which are very expensive the coming fiscal year. We're up on employee benefits. That's across the board for all departments, social security, retirement, insurance, those are all up. And then two projects that we're working on, sidewalk projects. If you look, there's a $50,000 budgeted item for a sidewalk grant. We're hoping, we call it JP's Sidewalk, but actually, it is a sidewalk that would connect Post Road, the under Post Road, down to the city sidewalk connections. It's near Mr. Twitter's, it's near the Mill Village area. So, and we're hoping to, in fact, I think we've applied for the grant. We've got a grant request into the state, and this will help with our match for it if we are successful in getting that. We also continue to work on trying to get a sidewalk completed here from the school along Post Road up Chisana and into Northwood. We have not been as successful completing that loop as we would like to be, but we're not giving up on it, and we're going to continue. So if you look there, and then you look under Engineering Services, two lines down, that's 30,000, and that would be also engineering, not only for culverts, but also for sidewalks if we, as we get closer to those. Big increase on the bottom line, stormwater, and I think you've heard that this is a continued mandate. The mandates keep increasing. There's a real push statewide to clean up water that flows into Lake Champlain, and all of us who are upstream are being asked to contribute more and clean up the waterways. So that $10,000 is up from 1,000 last year. So, that adds up to a total budget of just over $1 million. It was a heartbreaker because Byron never wanted to go over a million, but there it is. However, we are getting some income in. We get state aid for our roads, and we also have some carryover money, although I think if winter goes on much longer, we're not going to have much carryover. And so the amount raised by taxes is just over $900,000. A big thanks to the highway department, to Byron, to Walter Tripp, and to Jason Bathelon for the great work they do, and for all of our contractors. So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them. Really?
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Oh, my gosh. I circled.
Good job.
Thanks. I'm going to sit down quickly.
Thank you, Mary. I would invite John Paul Fagin to come up and present our police budget, please.
Good evening. This is probably one of the tighter budgets in your packet, page nine of your materials. And while it shows a less than a 1 percent increase, that's primarily due to about an $8,000 increase in insurance premiums, 1,500 in municipal retirement. But overall, this is a level-funded budget. Outstanding job by our department. Any questions?
Sorry. So, the first officer is a decrease?
Yes.
Are they reducing hours or?
No. That was a salary line for the first officer was actually deputy chief line. When we added the new officer, they both went in at the same starting salary there, $42,800. That's why that difference is there.
And then that overtime?
So, it's really hard to control police work. It's almost like --
It's like teaching.
Teaching.
You're not here.
All right. Our tow truck driving, or really, I mean, the calls come in when your shift is, 10 minutes before your shift's ready to get out, and you got a call that's going to take four or five hours. So, we were finding that it was just stifling not to be able to let the guys finish out the job they had started when everything was fresh, so. But they've been really judicious about that, so. And the police department turned money back in last year, so, I mean, they're watching the pennies.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Sharon, to come up and present our recreation budget, please.
Yes, I'm still here even if you can't see me. Before I even start, I would like to say, I really feel that we have a hell of a team in this town. Our chief of police, I can't, I speak volumes for him. Byron Hathaway is the only person in my lifetime that we had to tell him he should get a raise. That man looks for grants, saves this town, all kinds of money, and I have the utmost respect for what he does. Chris, a year ago, was new to us as the chief, and he was pretty timid and quiet. Boy, that went away quick. I have a feeling Dell has something to do with that. Yeah. You know, and our worker here for our Select Board, Bill, never refuses us. Everything we give him, he does, he doesn't question it. So, and Mike Rowe, who's trying to ignore me over there, that gets me into the recreation budget. You know, I didn't know Mike really till I came on this board, and I wasn't real too sure of him either, because he's got a swagger about him. because he's got a swagger about him that all of us noticed. Fuck, I will tell you.
Strut, not swagger.
Okay, you got a strut. Michael Jackson. Okay. I am totally impressed with what he has done with recreation. You look at the budget, I mean, the increase is .89. You know, and then you go up to those fields, you go up to the, the park and the, and the travel, little traveling roads that he has and the different things. I've been involved in recreation in this town for the better part of probably...
Long time.
Forty years. And in my heart is in recreation because I truly believe, just like that man out there, that get kids outside, get them to do things because that makes all the difference. So, Mike Rowe, I think you do one hell of a job. I think we have one heck of a team in this town. I think our board of selectmen, led by Josh, who spends hours on this town. I really think all of you need to know that we got a pretty darn good group running this town and I am so impressed. Any questions? Good girl.
It's hard to follow up those kind words from Sharon, so thank you for that. And so if you turn to the last page of your packet, the 2019, 2020, that needs to be changed too, Bill. That last, that last column is the 2020, 2021 projected budget, proposed budget. We'll have this cleaned up for the pre-town meeting on March 2nd before election day. But $2.854 million for the town budget, anticipated income of $389,140, anticipated 1% tax income of $1,050,000 and to be raised by taxes, $1,415,066. A total budget increase of 3.93% year-over-year. Any final questions on the municipal budget at this time? Yes?
Can you add page numbers maybe?
Next year, we will have these things beautifully labeled for you. Bill, take the note, please.
We're placing a question if you want to write it.
So, final thoughts before I'll have our town moderator come back up. Thanks for being here.
Thank you all. All right. So, at this time, we're going to transition over to the school board. And let's look, we, we lost our chairman. He's around here somewhere. So, why don't we take, I guess, a five-minute recess and get things changed over and be back here. We'll call this back to order. Chairman Branch has got his George Bush socks on here, so he's ready to take over. So, I'll hand it to him.
Thank you, sir. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Branch. I'm chair of the Rutland Town School Board. I'm also chair of the Greater Rutland County Supervisory Board that oversees a lot of the schools from Polton to Rutland Town. This is the Rutland Town portion of the pre-town meeting where we're going to be discussing a few of the warnings and other items. And I want to pull that out quick. Did I get a copy of that? Judy, can I see that warning that we had?
Okay.
So, we're putting out, there's a warning. It's available for anybody to obviously pick up. This is the warning that's going to go out. We've just finalized it. It's going to go out for voters in March. But everybody here is obviously warned to meet at the town meeting scheduled for March 2nd at 7:00 PM to discuss the following matters, which are business for the school district, and then convene the following day to vote on these items. The items which are coming up for vote this year are, one, shall the voters of the town of Rutland approve a budget of $8,424,741? The second item that's coming up is shall the voters of the town of Rutland authorize the school district to purchase a 19-acre parcel of land owned by the Margaret Grover Estate for a purchase price of $35,000 and to elect school district officials as required by law. So, that's the warning that's coming out. I wanted to also take a second and introduce everybody here. So, I think most people know everyone. But anyway, we have board members, starting with Ross Marzan on the end, Lynn Galapo, we have Karine Rodriguez, and Tim Hammond, and obviously myself. We have Principal Deborah Rodolphy, co-principal Sarah Tetslav. This is our superintendent, Judith Pullen for the GRCSU, and then Louis Malazo, who's our finance and budget guy. And everybody here makes up both the school board, obviously, administration staff here at the school, and SU administration. Budget items are now overseen by the SU. Louis will be preparing that. I think we're at six or seven schools. I think seven towns, six schools, or the, what's that?
Eight schools.
Eight schools, but some of the towns have two. So, it's, you know, Proctor Elementary and then Proctor High School. So, I think we really have six towns with the schools in the district. And so, Louis and Judy are overseeing that, which also includes Rutland Town. So, I'll cut into the budget, but if anybody has any questions, feel free to stop me. We have a very short presentation tonight. We, the budget last year for the school board that we put out was $7,941,037. This year, the budget being proposed again is $8,424,741. That is a 6.09% increase over last year. Unfortunately, this is primarily due to matters that are out of our hands. Health insurance rose again this year, I believe 12.8%. Last year, it was 11.9% if I'm not mistaken. So, we're up over 20%, approaching 25% in health care for the staff. And that is over the course of two years. The, in addition to that, you obviously have the increases when we unified the district teacher salaries. There wasn't a lot to change for Rutland Town. The other school districts came on to our index. So, the other towns like Middletown, Springs, Wells, and Polton saw a heavier increase. For us, it pretty much stayed the same because they came over to our index on our side. This year, we have no special projects, the school board, because we knew it was going to be tight. Money is going to be limited. We knew they had, we had these increases with nothing that we could control. And I was just talking to the principals about one of the only increases we had this year was $7,000 for some playground equipment to suit the needs of our preschoolers that are here, required by federal law, obviously, to get them outs, or state law, I believe, to get them outside, have them active, and they have recess. And right now, our playground was obviously designed through K through eight, and a lot of the items are too big for preschoolers that are three and four years old that are here. So, the, included in the budget is, I believe, around $7,000 to add new equipment to the playground. And so, that's one of the only increases we have, but we've made some decent strides around here in that the HVAC system was updated last year, thanks to the voter approval of that. We have, which is essentially the airflow to the school. We had classrooms that had zero airflow to them. And in the winter times, that's rather important considering it's cold and flu season and just for general overall health. And we had classrooms with no flow. We had some classrooms that are 80 degrees and other classrooms are 65 degrees. So, through the controls and regulators, we're still working on it. It's not perfect, but we've made a lot of strides. And I think the administration could attest to the changes we've had here as a result of the upgrades to the system that we've had. So, the electrical panel, in addition to the, or one of the circuit boards for the solar panels that are on the roof, those are back to working again. And then, most importantly, we have a project that's going on that's cost the school district $0. But one of our board members, Karine Rodriguez, has taken point on the ice skating rink out back. And it's become a full-time job for her. I don't think she realized how much time it was going to take. But anyway, she, she's done an incredible job out there through the help with people like GE. I know Matt Voidy came up here and helped with lights. And it's really been an amazing effort to see the amount of people that came together and the amount of money raised. I think we're over $10,000 that have been raised out there. What's the total?
$11,400.
$11,400. And I believe that somewhere around $7,000, $8,000 has been spent in that neighborhood.
On the skates.
About $7,000 for skates.
Yep.
And then there was some lighting and electrical that we had had to pay for. So, so far, the rink has cost the school district $0. This has been through the hard work and determination of her to bring some skating here. It's going to be used by both PE class, phys ed, and then also, we'll see how it's going to work out elsewhere with other skating times, kids coming in and cleaning the ice. The Rutland Town Fire Department's been over here hosing down the old rink area. And so, there's going to be a lot of upgrades that need to be made over the next year, such as should we put down plastic? Should there be borders? Should we actually purchase a rink? So, fundraising is going to continue for that. And the other item that we really need out there for the rink, there's probably going to be a need for someone a couple of months. Mr. Fishback in the 80s, when the rink came in, I think around 1984, and ran for a couple of years. That's the reason that shed was built. He was the motion maker behind that and was out there caring for the rinks, hosing it down with water. And things have changed out there. The old water valve that was there that they used to flood the rink has been cut off from the supply. So, the valve's there, but there's no water running to it. It's not connected to the water line. So, the Rutland Town Fire Department's been coming and hooking up to the hydrant, but there's going to be, need to be some changes there. And then there needs to be a person out there, whether it's the month of January and February, but someone that can take some point, both in letting out skates and, you know, taking care of the rink, shoveling it off. It's like a full-time job out there. And so, anyway, the money raising will continue. So, if anybody can donate, you can make donations into the principal's office. But that's been a, really a great endeavor for us because it hasn't cost the district anything. So, that's been a question that we fielded. And so, the, at this point, we don't have anything else, I think, in the budget that can be cut. So, at this point, if voters don't approve the school budget this year, we're looking at cutting staff and teachers. Now, the only two places that we have to go towards cuts are going to be into building maintenance, which I think is fairly sparse. But we have a building here. It was built around 1967 and 1968. And a lot of this has been upgraded. The additions have been put on. We have different plumbing and electrical systems meeting up as the different decades have come and gone. And we've done a lot to get it under control, but we still have a long ways to go. We haven't put the money down in the budget. There's some asbestos remediation, and it's not anything that's causing a danger, but it's floor tiles that ultimately need to be removed. There's a lot of different ways. The principals have talked about how we can upgrade things. And this unfortunately was not going to be the year. Just the other costs that have been coming through and increasing our budget without our control have been difficult. So, anyway, we are at the point that there is nothing in the budget, I think, to cut at this time, except for a little bit of building maintenance costs. And then otherwise, we're looking at teachers and staff. That's the position that we're at. And it's unfortunate to see that with a six-point, or little over a 6% increase for the voters out there. And so, anyway, that's it. I don't know if anyone has anything to add, if any in the public has questions. Marcia?
I have a question. You mentioned up quickly about 19 acres, a possibility of purchasing. And I just was curious, I missed, I think, the end of it. Like, is it near the school or?
Perfect. That's a great question. I'm glad you brought that up. So, the, the 19.42 acres is located directly behind the school. It's on our northern boundary, almost takes up our entire northern boundary. So, if you were to walk out past the fields, you'll find that there's an old barbed wire fence in the woods about 40, 50 feet in. And, and that is to the, it's the Grover Estate. I don't know, I don't know who put that fence up originally. I don't think it's them. It's probably back in the early 1900s and farming around here. And, but anyway, if you walk off the back of our field, about 40, 50 feet in, there's the old boundary line there. That parcel is 19.42 acres behind it. It will connect Rutland Town School to Grover Drive. It has one access near John Sly's house, I believe, and Mrs. Grover's house, where she used to live in the development before she passed away. But it comes out, and I want to say it's got about 40, 30, 40 feet of road frontage in the Grover Development. So, that will link Grover directly with Rutland Town. We can use that space first. Land's only going to come around once. We really think it's an important issue for the voters to consider. We're getting a shot at it now and we may not see that happen again. The original asking price for the land was $75,000. And we made a pitch to them and said it's for the school, obviously a good cause. And the Grover Estate was nice enough to drop it down to $35,000. We tried for some more, but at the same time, they held firm at that number at 35, which for 19.42 acres is pretty good. It's not developable, you know, most likely. There's power lines out there, old easements for the city of Rutland. There's all sorts of things going on in the property. That black water line for Green Mountain Power runs down through there. The access road beside that water line runs down through there. And, but our thoughts are, is that we may not have a use for it just yet, as in fully using that whole property. But, but a lot of times here at the school board, I just see it as our role is to get things going and set them in motion. And you don't know who's going to pick it up from there. And this is important to us because right now, we need it for field expansion. This spring, we're looking at cutting down the trees and expanding the field back a little further. Right now, when you lay the lines for soccer, lacrosse, it's right across the back of the field, right on the edge of the bushes. And it's at this point that balls are flying in the woods. It's really not a great field to come play at Rutland Town. So, we've been able to move the baseball field back about 40 feet now, which has given us more green space on our soccer field and lacrosse field. And now, there needs to be some work at the end of the field. But we're pressed up against that boundary line in what we can do. So, purchasing this property will, first of all, allow us to clean up that old fence back there, open back up the trails that exist, connect it to Grover Drive. And then we're also working on talking with three landowners. And I think this is a discussion that's going to take place over the next few years. But we talked with a few landowners about connecting Rutland Town School with Northwood Park. So, kids don't have to leave for soccer practice and run up Post Road. And then on Chisana, I believe currently, a net drain water has given them permission to cut through their backyard, but nobody else. And so, we would take those kids off the road and theoretically, they could run from behind the school up into Northwood Park. People, people could park here at the school. If that happens in a few years, could park here at the school, walk their dogs up to the park and then back here, instead of everybody accessing it on Northwood. But that, I think, is going to be a few years out. It's going to take cooperation on landowners and people and require a little more, I think, finesse in getting that trail to happen. But, you know, at first, having the land out back gives us the ability for expansion of the fields, gives us the ability to do some cross-country ski classes, gives us a chance to do some ecology classes out there in the wetland and the stream that exists back there. And we think it's a very valuable and important purchase for the town of Rutland. And for $35,000, I think the board voted unanimously to put it out there to voters. And it was nice that we were over meeting with the select board. Vice Chair Galapo and I went over there a couple of weeks ago and met with them. And it was a fairly receptive discussion that we had over there about adding this on, you know, for the cost and the overall budgets. And I was sitting here tonight and listening to the discussions and people asking for money. I mean, you can opt in, the library's, you know, approaching $100,000. And that's a yearly fee that we paid. We got the bus that's usually in at $15,000 or $20,000 and all these different agencies. This purchase, one-time purchase of $35,000 plus closing costs would allow us to acquire this land out back and have it as part of the school forever. And if that doesn't happen, then we're looking, you know, I would guess, most likely whoever ends up buying the Grover Development, there's a whole section behind it with all phase two of Grover, which is undeveloped. It's got a road. But that is all for sale. They want to sell that as a whole. Otherwise, I believe this 19.42 acres is going to go with that. It'll be in the hands of a real estate developer. And so, we think it's important to be able to also control the back of the school for security and safety. There could at the, you know, current time be people out there hunting right behind the school. And so, the, there's some issues with that. I do think people should be out there and be able to use government property. There's been some discussion at the select board. I understand a lot of Northwood Park now is posted, if not all of it. But right now, that's in private ownership behind us. And that's right here at the school, right off the back of our fields. And so, that's another important issue for us. So, I hope the voters will consider improving that.
One will have a last question. Okay, I could be wrong in this, but I thought the maintenance director that we have, the facilities manager, I'm not sure of the title, but I thought there was, it was a decrease in percentage of full-time.
Yep.
And I was just curious if that saved the board or, or there was just, it was...
Louis could discuss it.
It was full-time, but it kept at the same salary or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's been a huge savings for us, if there has been. And, and so, what essentially happened was we decreased our full-time maintenance person, Ryan, and we decreased him down to, I believe, to a .6. But then we also increased the custodian role, .6. So...
It was supposed to wash.
Yeah, the two washed each other out.
It's not a savings, but we ended up with more hands-on.
He added a new custodian, .6, which will offset it. Someone who's going to do more of a cleaning role to take on what he's dropping. And it's a pretty close to a wash.
And that's, I mean, I presume there's a little savings, but, sir?
On the land you were talking about, the 19 acres, you know, connecting to Grover Drive, would residents be able to, you know, I realize it's a very long-term plan, but like the trails, residents would be able to use it? Like, the people, I happen to live on the adjoining street to Grover.
Yep.
So, we used to be able to walk along to the Clinton Dam.
Yep.
But now, Green Mountain Power shut that down. You can't do that anymore. So, it'd be nice to have some trails in.
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure if Green Mountain Power did that or not, or how that came about, because I've lived here since the... because I've lived here since the, you know, 80s. And we used to always walk up there. That path was open for everybody. You could park right there at the gates on the Sanborn Place. If you go up here to Chisana and then out on Sanborn.
Yeah, but they shut down parking.
Yeah, so the parking stopped. And I think that was more the private landowners than it was Green Mountain Power. My understanding is Green Mountain Power doesn't even own that section where the gate was. They put it up there, but they don't even own the land underneath it.
Right, but for those of us who lived, like, we happen to know Pet Grover.
Yep.
She would let us wander there. But most people couldn't do that. So you'd have to get in the car and drive to the school here and, you know, or drive up to Chisana.
So the neat thing right now is that 19.42 acre parcel abuts our entire northern boundary here. And it has about 40 feet of frontage on Grover. So now we can go from here to Grover Drive right now, and it'll all be school property. So kids can, through Grover Countryside, East Pittsford Road now, ride up through Grover and literally bring their bikes right in the backyard. We may have to get a bike rack back there, which is cool. It'll get kids out and about. Because otherwise, you'd never send them down Route 7. You would never let your kids ride down Route 7, go through that whole intersection down here. And then, once you get to Post Road, you get to the sidewalk. But you weren't going to allow kids to do that. So that's one thing I had talked to a couple of landowners about. But I think it's going to be a positive effect on the property values of both Grover Countryside, East Pittsford Road, and people being able to access that. And I think certainly in the future, we've talked to a couple of landowners, but also about getting Chisana on there. And that's where we run into those three property owners on the Sanborn Place. And there's some concerns about traffic. There was a concern about what the town's original Act 250 permit looked like when Northwood Park was created, how many accesses there could be, whether there needs to be an amendment to that permit. And that's something I don't have the knowledge of. But right now, we can literally, if this is approved, we will be able to go from Rutland Town School to Grover Drive, all on school property. And it's just a question of connecting it to Northwood Park.
They would have to, the path would have to kind of go over the, well, there's a place where the?
I went out there myself, the old path's still there. And someone's been walking in already, and now it's dwindled down to this through the vegetation. But the path is still there, where you?
With the pipeline, there's only like a few places that you can pass.
Yep. And I think this one is actually pretty close to where you would be able to drive over the pipeline with a vehicle. There's actually solid dirt where this parcel goes over. But so anyway, that would also have to be worked out. And those are, you know, a lot of the things. And we're hoping the voters approve it, and then we can start to tackle those issues.
It'll be on the March ballot.
What's that? This will be on the March ballot, yep, for voters to approve. And it looks like a great item.
Article three.
Yeah, and this is, yeah, it's going to be a separate, it's not included in the school budget. It's a separate article. And we're really hoping that people will vote yes for this. It's going to be a huge benefit, we believe, to both the school and the town ultimately in the future. Any other questions anybody had? Is there anything that any board member would like to add? Anything that wasn't covered? Anything from the administration?
No, I just think that we are fortunate that our numbers keep continuing to grow. Unlike a lot of other area schools, they've seen a decline in enrollment. We're at 360 students right now, and we have 100, how many, post-secondary?
About 145.
About 145 students, nine, secondary, nine through 12. So you'll see that, that that's a little bit of a cost increase because we have more students going into ninth grade than we have graduating 12th. But we have, on a weekly basis, people, school shopping, families touring, which is a great thing.
And we appreciate your support, as always.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll end on this, you know, obviously, we're going to have a lot of voters. We always have around 1,000 turnout, and I've got six, eight of you here tonight. But the?
We have Pet TV, so everybody in town's going to watch it.
Has cable.
Everybody?
Yeah, has cable.
The, you know, one of the interesting issues that's come up a few times, and I do want to dispel the rumor here, Rutland Town, that, you know, the school shouldn't expand. We are at the same class sizes historically that we've always been out, or been at. Why can't we make it work? In the future, you know, there's an upstairs that's unfinished. We may start to move in that direction. But things are getting tight in this school. And it's important for people at home and here to understand why things have gotten tight and what's changed about education. And I think the biggest change that we've seen in education over the last 20 or 30 years is the American with Disabilities Act. And so we have now a rise in special education that we did not have back in the day. We now have special educators. And that encompasses, it's now been shifted over to the SU, but those employees, but at the same time, they're still providing services here. And there could be anything from occupational therapists, to psychologists, to our speech and language here. And there is just a host of services that are now provided and professionals that we have in the building that didn't exist 20 years ago. We might add one person now, we're up to 10. So there's been some changes in there. So we have a school enrollment that's starting to uptick. We've got some big classes pushing through. I think we're, we are now over three classes, three distinct grades that have over 40 kids in each grade. And my comfort level has always been, and I don't really feel comfortable with it, but one teacher for every 20 students. Once we go over that, so on average, we're running in each class two teachers. And but unfortunately, when we go over that, then we're looking at having one teacher for 23 kids. On top of having our special education issues and having our special educators in the classroom with the children, because a lot of times, it's been include these children in our classrooms. No more, you know, separation and segregation that we saw historically with these kids and, you know, taken to another school, brought outside of the classroom, and they do something else. Occasionally, that happens in severe cases. But generally, it's more inclusive now to include them. And so anyway, it's, the school is getting tight in here. We have run out of office space. There are people that are sharing spaces. And I believe our occupational therapist, if I'm not mistaken, meets right behind me on the stage or?
With our physical therapist.
With our physical therapist here. That's their office behind us. So this is the amount of room that we've, we've come across. But a lot of people in the town, I've heard, we don't need to spend this, we can't do that. And the truth is, we don't have a choice. The American with Disability Act mandates that. We have now kids on IEPs, and I believe it's 504 plans. And we have to meet their needs. And that's a part of the school district now and comes with the territory. This is not something that's optional, that we can just cut. These are expenses we can save and make more room. It's a changing education system. So if anyone ever tells you that things haven't changed since 25 years ago, class sizes are still the same, and everything should be the same here at the school, that's not true. There's been some major changes in the education system. And we're experiencing those right here at Rutland Town. So we hope the voters will get out and approve the school budget. It's going to be on the ballot coming up, March 3rd. And right now, I think, if I can, are we going to vote to approve this and put it out to voters? No, we need to sign it.
After, yeah. I have a question for the board before we get that. Just to let you know, the estimated tax rate calculation is showing an adjusted tax rate if we go through with what we just presented. Your, the percentage is under 5% on your tax rate.
So, and thank you for pointing that out. And that's down at the bottom, the adjusted tax rate, we're projecting at 4.87%, which would be the impact on the voters. And we're still waiting on a couple of numbers, Louis, is that correct?
There is a slide. Can we put that slide up so that people can see?
This is also on our webpage. If you want to look, this presentation is also on our webpage.
Now, I would just reiterate that people move to our town because of our school and the education and the educators that we have here. And our class size and our ratio that we have is a huge benefit and draw for our school. And our school is so great because of the time and energy that the teachers and administrators and the school board and the taxpayers put into it because we feel, as a town, education is so important. So many people move here. My parents moved here so that I could go here. And so I, you know, there's been changes in education, but I think the thing that hasn't changed is the importance of education in this school to this town.
Thank you. Is this the one you were looking for, Louis? Yeah? These are some of the numbers that we tossed around. And so what Lynn was bringing up was down at the bottom on the adjusted tax rate of 4.87%. But we're waiting on, is it a couple of numbers?
I can walk them through this real quick if you want.
Briefly, yeah, sure.
Sure, so the top line is the total expense. Matt talked about that, the $8,424,000. One of the things I just want to mention is, which is really driving our expense up, is secondary tuition. It's causing about a third of that increase. So, and that's a result of both tuition rates increasing between 3% to 5%, as well as, someone else mentioned earlier, the ninth grade class that's going into secondary schools is larger than the 12th grade that's graduating. So we have an increase of students that we're paying for. The next line, second line, is education spending. That's the amount we're raising in property taxes. That's $8,280,000. That's a calculation of total expense minus any revenues that we're raising, other than property taxes. So surplus, tuition revenue, any grants that we receive. Equalized pupils, that's a number from the state. It's a two-year average of our enrollment, and there's some weighting that the state does that's at 497, pretty close to last year's number. Our spending per pupil, which is the education spending divided by our equalized pupils, is at $16,633. That's up 5.68%. The property yield, that's one of the numbers that we're, is just an estimate at this point. This number is recommended by the tax commissioner, but doesn't actually get approved until the legislators approve it. And that's usually pretty late in the session. So right now, the number that they're telling us to use is $10,883, an increase over last year. As that number increases, it brings down property taxes. So we want to see that number go up. Equalized tax rate is a calculation of our spending per pupil, the $16,633, divided by the property yield of $10,883. So when we divide those two numbers, we get 1.52. That would be your tax rate before any adjustments. That's up 3.4%. And then the final piece is the CLA, that's the Common Level of Appraisal. That compares the fair market value of your home to the assessed value of your home. If that was at 100%, that means those two numbers equal. When that number is below 100, it means the fair market value of your house is more than the assessed value of your house. So your home value is going up. If that number was above 100, it means your home value is going down, and the assessed value is more than the fair market value. So that number did decrease over last year, and unfortunately, that does bring up tax rates. So your adjusted tax rate after the CLA and all those other numbers that we looked at is 1.53, an increase of 4.87%, which is roughly about seven cents.
Any questions I can answer?
A lot easier with the select board, they just say this is the percentage. We don't have so many fingers in there like we do.
Thank you, Louis. So no questions from anybody? Any other businesses the school board needs to take up tonight?
We do, we just need to postpone for a minute while we sign the warning.
Okay, so we'll sign the warning, and then that, was that anything else this evening? Great, sure.
Did you focus, what are they called, the hour code again this year?
Some of our classrooms did, yes. Not as a school-wide, but some of our classrooms did participate in it, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm still working very part-time in IT, but that was my field. And I find it's kind of interesting, you hear the news, like, up in Burlington area, they're always looking for people. And it's great that our code is like a worldwide thing. But my question is, is why are we living, living it to an hour?
Yeah.
A year, it just seems like?
So we're really fortunate that we actually have three, 3D printers. One that was donated by a family. So we have one in our library, one in Mike Rose's room. He teaches PE, health, and technical education still. So he does robotic things, a number of things with the kids in middle school. And then Beth McReynolds, our art teacher, she also has a 3D printer in her room as well, incorporates a lot of technology. And our new library media specialist, who also is with a couple of other teachers putting on the school play, that was new last year, The Lion King, that's in April. Little plug for that. He incorporates a lot of maker space within his library. And he teaches pre-K up to eighth grade. So that's really incorporated throughout our school, for sure.
Let me go ahead and close this out? Do you want to take care of that? We got to get your hours up, all right?[1723.02]